Hello, everyone. Welcome calling the meeting to order Tuesday, January 14, 2020. First meeting of a brand-new year. A lot of new faces and some familiar faces in new places. Mayor Jensen, would you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation on the ground, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mayor. We have a roll call to start. Ms. Lee's.
Mr. Air.
President.
Mr. Boyce.
President.
Mr. Davis.
President.
Mr. O'Connor.
Here.
Mr. Peterson.
Here.
Mr. Schwartz.
President.
Mr. Smith.
President.
Ms. Wiles.
Here.
Mr. Hampton.
Here.
Mr. President, you have a forum.
Thank you very much, Ms. Lee's. Moving to the next item on the agenda, the approval of the minutes from our December 17, 2019 meeting.
Motion to approve.
Second. We have a motion and a second. This is a hand vote. All those in favor of approving the minutes. Okay. And then approval, we had an organizational meeting on January 6. Approval of the minutes for that meeting was January 6, 2020.
Move to approve.
Second. Motion and second. This is also a hand vote. All in favor?
Abstain.
We have eight and one abstention. Thank you. Approval of the agenda.
Motion to approve.
Another approve. I mean, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor? The agenda is approved 9-0. So petitions or comments by citizens who are present, I have none. Is there anyone that would like to speak? There is a card just outside the doors that you can fill out and please give to Ms. Lee's if you want to. Council committee reports. We have several, I think. I have one. I can start with one. I went to the Park Board meeting. They met January 8. They slated their new officers for 2020. Todd Thurston is the new president of the Park Board. Also, the Park Board reported that the Ice Plaza was a success. Reported about 7,500 visitors to the Ice Plaza there at Federal Hill Commons and 5,733 skaters. So, and they also unveiled a new website on January 2. That's from the Park Board. Any other council committee?
President.
Just what?
The Roads Committee met on Friday, January 3, and there are several items discussed, and I'm not going to go over all of them. But the biggest things moving forward is that our city engineer, Ali Krupsky, is available for any citizen who might have any comments or questions, especially regarding some of our upcoming projects. So we want to make sure that that's very clear. We have, there are several items that council members have been asking staff about, and they gave us an update on that. There will be an ordinance update to the traffic code, but that will be coming forward in the next coming weeks or coming meetings. Pleasant Street is moving forward. Recommendations for awards are expected to be in February with grants awarded in May. So again, any questions that any residents might have regarding the Pleasant Street project, they should be addressed to Ali Krupsky at the City of Noblesville. Street rehabilitation has been ongoing and will be taking effect as soon as the weather really does break for Indiana. Harriman Boulevard will be moving forward with Phase 2, which is north of 141st Street. Bids were opened in November, and we anticipate a spring 2020 construction. State Route 37 is ongoing. Drainage lines are, that contract completion is expected by April of 2020. Logan Street Bridge, pedestrian bridge, was opened, and all of us were able to be there for the ribbon cutting, and hopefully many residents have been able to see that. It is a beautiful, bright addition to our city skyline in the evening. So please continue to check that out. The Thirfer Plan update is ongoing. In conjunction with the Comprehensive Master Plan, we will be working to put together a capital improvements plan, and that's ongoing. We expect that completion to be towards the end of 2020. One of the projects that's included through there is the Little Chicago Road Trail over Morse Lake, and that design is ongoing with construction in 2023. We're also working on the South Allisonville Road Trail with construction set for 2020. We're also in the midst of a road impact fee, and that A and F Engineering is working on that, and that should be coming to us later this summer. Several projects with Indot that will keep moving forward, and that's really it.
Very busy meeting.
Anyone has any questions?
Yeah, very busy meeting. I think you get the feeling, I was there also, that that's the kind of way it's going to be with that group.
Yes.
When exactly does the weather break in Indiana?
That's a really good question. I'm not sure.
Any other council reports?
Mr. President.
Mr. O'Connor.
The Finance Committee met January 9. Couple of things of note, the 2020 budget order we received back from DLGF, the Form 1782, which allows us to make any changes that would have been submitted to DLGF for the budget. Mr. Spalding made a couple of tweaks that ensured that our property, our rate, tax rate for the year would stay at $1.10. So that's been taken care of and resubmitted to DLGF. We'll have a transfer coming for the new executive staff structure from a budget realignment perspective. As you know, we can't make changes in the budget until the year in which the budget is actually in operation, so that's a 2020 action. The appropriation item for the building authority refunding bonds is on the agenda, so I'll let Mr. Spalding speak to that. We had some conversation about lit reallocation. We've had several meetings with Fishers and Westfield and Carmel discussing the whole lit reallocation issue. We thought we had come up with a potential compromise for that, but at this point, friends and Carmel are not necessarily anxious to follow the program that we had come up with. So there is a bill in the legislature that Representative Houston introduced last year that will speak to the whole notion of how lit will be reallocated in the county. So I'm not sure what the outcome of that will be, but I thought that we had come up with a program that was a little more advantageous for all of us. But in the end, Carmel declined. So the other point with respect to lit, I did bring up the issue of the public safety lit, which is going to provide additional revenue for all of us in the county. And I asked Deputy Mayor Light to make sure that he stays on top of that on a go-forward basis, because we want to make sure that we get our fair share of the funding with respect to public safety. We talked about encumbrances. There were fewer of those at year-end. Most of those, some of those got paid that we didn't anticipate, so we will see the rest of those in the first meeting in February. And then we had a conversation about the potential of the OFA Office having authority to do some transfers in and amongst departments, in and amongst funds, at a $50,000 level. And there was some back and forth about should we do that, should we not do that. The council certainly is responsible for the fiscal actions of the city, but this is more of an efficiency thing from OFA's standpoint. So I think in the end, Mr. Peterson had some concerns about it. I think Ms. Wiles and I and Mr. Davis were comfortable with it. I asked Mr. Spalding to put a resolution together and bring it back to the next meeting, so we'll have further conversation about that. And the claims come to you with a favorable recommendation, although there were a couple of additions to that subsequent to our meeting. I reviewed those. I didn't see anything that caused me any concern. I don't know about the rest of the committee members, but that's it.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. O'Connor. Normally, we would vote to approve the claims right now, but we're going to take a quick break on the agenda and introduce the 2019 council president, Mr. Brian Air, with a special announcement.
We normally do a Stake in the Ground Award at the end of, or the last meeting in December, but it was so busy with so many people coming in, going out, that we decided to do it the first part of January. And the Stake in the Ground Award's been around for over 20 years. Alan Hines, I believe, started it. Mark's kind of taken over and helped with the Survey Monkey part of it to make sure. We had a lot of, a lot of nominations that came in, and there was one that, I guess, kind of, kind of stood out and received the most votes. And Mr. Spalding, you had some very good comments, and you received the most votes. The comments were, the comments that were put out there by different council member were that he was, he has taken the city finances to a new level, doing all he can to make city finances transparent to the taxpayer. I think that's very accurate. Our budget process was greatly improved over the last years, largely due to Jeff's cleanup work. Jeff has been instrumental in making significant changes to the city's budget process, which has increased the quality of the product. In addition, Jeff is addressing issues surrounding cash management, debt man, debt mapping, which will be necessary for future project planning. A lot of good comments there. You received this fine state to commemorate this, and it's been signed. You'll also get a $50 gift card to a local restaurant, and I don't think Mark brought it tonight, so we'll get it to you.
Check's in the mail.
I did know I was responsible for that. I guess I am.
That's almost an Osprey city.
Hey, could you two please come towards the middle and get some pictures from Mr. Harrington? You want us up there?
This is a council board. The council needs to be in this.
Want us up front?
You can stand above us.
Bert Best, Robert.
Robert, you tell us where you want us.
You want to be in front of the chairs up there.
I'll turn it out to you directly.
Yours got moved, too.
I got it.
Can I get a chair? Thank you again, Mr. Boyce, for organizing that and getting that all together. It was, as Mr. Air said, it was a challenge. There were several nominations, back and forth.
And so department heads and directors, so, oh, good.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Air.
Thank you.
Moving back to the agenda, we are at the approval of claims. We have a favorable recommendation from the Finance Committee. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second. First and a second. All those in favor of approving claims, raise your right hand. Unanimous 9-0. Thank you. Moving on to new ordinances for discussion. Council to consider ordinance 01-01-20 and ordinance approving additional appropriations in the debt service building refunding bonds of 2014, Series B, and establishing a public hearing.
Mr. President, I have moved to introduce ordinance 01-01-20.
Second. Mr. Spalding.
Mr. President, members of the council, I guess first of all, again, thank you for the award. Much appreciated and definitely totally a surprise. So thank you for that. I guess along those lines, this first item is kind of some of the type of cleanup thing that I've been, been working on over the past couple of years. Fairly auspicious ordinance number, but pretty inauspicious item. This is very much a technical correction, and for the new members on the council, you'll look at, generally when I try to draft up the ordinances in the whereas clauses, I try to do as good a job as I can of providing some type of relatively layman-friendly explanation. And so this has to do with some very technical things about certain types of debts are designed as lease payments. Other types of debts are designed as kind of normal debts with debt service payments. Because of some of the confusion around that, the budget for this, the debt service fund for this bond was set at the wrong amount. It should have been set at one of those numbers. It was set at the other, and this basically just corrects that. And I think it shows on the ordinance, the total amount we're talking about is $4,066. And I think the most important thing about it, it does not change by $1 the amount of money that the city will spend. We have to make the payment. It's just getting the budget amount to correctly reflect the action that we'll take. So that's the, the purpose of the ordinance.
All right. Any questions for Mr. Spalding?
All right.
See you in two weeks.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Oh, we do need a motion to establish a public hearing for this ordinance.
I'm moved.
Mr. President, I would make a motion that we establish a public hearing for ordinance number 01-01-20.
Second. Motion and a second. This is also a hand vote to open the public, to establish the public hearing. Raise your right hand, please. 9-0. Thank you. Council to consider ordinance 02-01-20 and ordinance regarding a special consideration for the construction of an automobile service use, Bell Tire, as part of the Saxony Corporate Campus Plan Development District and the corporate campus located north of Campus Parkway and north of Teakler Drive as extended and east of Bowden Road.
Mr. President, I would move to introduce ordinance 02-01-20.
Second.
It's not Ms. Yeltsin. It's Ms. Reed. Sorry about that.
No, it's fine.
Good evening. This item before you tonight started the planning process under the previous administration, was filed at our filing deadline for planning in October 21. It had a public hearing at the December 9 Plan Commission meeting. As President Hampton mentioned, the petition is a special consideration for an automobile service use specifically for this particular location of Bell Tire within the Saxony Corporate Campus. Just for new members and old members, a refresher, a special consideration is a use that's deemed appropriate in a particular zoning district, but might require additional conditions due to the nature of that type of business. I would say, as you can see from the site map, and I don't think the projector, is it, can you guys see it even though it's not up there?
Yeah, you see it, yes.
You're full of that. So the public cannot see it, but you can. Is it zooming out enough that you guys can see that?
Raise, there you go, right there.
Okay, quick. So, okay, just kind of want to show the location here. So as you can see from the site location map, access to this site will be off of, I call it Tegler. I don't know if we know the official name. Tegler Drive. Items that came up for conversation from the Plan Commission members were outdoor storage, which we clarified in that meeting, are not permitted under our ordinance. Exposed rooftop mechanicals, so you can sometimes see HVAC from the top of buildings. Those are required to be screened by our ordinance. And then signage, which we conveyed to the sign company and representatives of Bell Tire, our ordinance requirement. So as, as we discuss the requirements of the ordinance, as a petition is filed for a building permit, we look at all of those items to make sure they're compliant. So that'll be caught at the building permit stage, but just want to let you know what items were discussed. And Mr. Peterson can add in more if he has questions. At the Plan Commission public hearing, no one from the audience came forward to speak for or against this project. The item comes to you with a favorable recommendation and a vote of nine ayes, 10 nays, and zero abstentions. A correct.
Nine nays?
I'm sorry, did I say 10? Nine ayes, no nays, and no abstentions. And a correction of that.
That's a big difference.
It is a big difference. Well, I don't want a 19-member commission ever. If that ever happens, we're all in trouble. And so a correction of that vote sheet has been given to Ms. Lee's, because that was actually in the ordinance. So now there's an ordinance amendment for your next time. No action is necessary tonight. This is just the first meeting, and it'll be back before you on January 28. This is just the first meeting, and it'll be back before you on January 28th for.[1080.83]